It's 6:30. I'll call our Monday, February 17th meeting to order a roll call.
Here.
He is not able to join us tonight.
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
No, here.
Here.
Carly, here.
I am here.
Dr. Soler has a meeting in just a couple of minutes.
Yes.
Please join me in a little bit.
...to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on. Number two. Our agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Oh.
I'll say it.
All those in favor of approving our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Approval of our February 3rd regular board meeting minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve those? Motion number?
Second.
Motion by Carly, seconded by Joel, to approve our February 3rd regular board meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Citizens comment. I see that we have more than one person who is willing to speak this evening. Board of Education Policy 187, holding participation at board meeting. Welcome to input from our community about topics to maintain in education. We ask speakers to please provide their name and address for the record. In accordance with board policy, the speaker should please keep their comments to no longer than three minutes, so others who wish to speak can and the whole business of the board can be published. Dr. Soler will help me with timekeeping. Who is our first speaker?
One, please, to welcome Patty Schleifer.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I am Patty Schleifer. I live at 210th Street. I'm a very proper retired teacher, music teacher in the school district, also a substitute teacher for the school district tomorrow. And, just found that one out. But most importantly, I am extremely proud to say I'm a member of our local nonprofit, PFLAG Mount Horeb, and I'm a member of the board. So, I'm here tonight because we are hoping to have someone from PFLAG at every meeting of the school board from now on out. And, I'd say from now on out. We are here because first, we're thanking you for all the work that the school board does, Dr. Soler, among the teachers, and the school board for all the support that you give to all of the students. But as you know, particularly, we support, our group is concerned with advocacy, education, and support of our LGBTQIA+ and any marginalized community members, particularly students. And we appreciate all that you have done. And you've made that clear, that you are here to support and protect those children. Current conditions, I need to say more. We're concerned with the safety and the health and all that goes along with keeping her kids well. So, with that said, we ask no actions tonight. We're simply here to support you, and then you know we are here for that. So, that's it. Thank you, everyone.
And good evening to Mr. Kelly Rock.
My name is Kelly Rock. I am a member of the community. So this is my continued attempt to have the school board pause any movement to EVG grading at the high school and middle school. And, to further that, I'd like to present the following information. First, it is a documented study, and I will provide only to you if you'd like them, called "Getting High School Students Ready for College: A Quantitative Study of Standards-Based Grading Practices", shows a decrease in ACT scores correlated to standards-based grading, which is another name for evidence-based grading. So from the summaries, the findings reveal GPAs remain unchanged, and ACT scores may be negatively impacted when high schools utilize standard-based grading practices. So, my next bit of information that pertains to this topic is from the MIT admissions page. And I could have picked Brown University, I could have picked a number of other universities, but I picked them. So after careful consideration, we have decided to reinstate our SAT and ACT requirements for future admissions cycles. A research shows that standardized tests help us better assess the academic preparedness of all applicants. So, the simple logic is, Mount Horeb is choosing a path where ACT scores may be negatively affected, and colleges are relying more and more on ACT scores to determine whether their applicants are actually prepared for college. So, therefore, are our children going to be less prepared for college? So, members of the board, all I'm asking, why is it not a smart idea to stop and send out some surveys to assess the parent community and whether they are willing to move forward with the EVG grading system? Any, any answer?
Mr. Rock, it would be helpful for you to know that the board is in a listening mode at this time. We don't have it as an agenda item here. But we do have it as a standing agenda item on our education committee. You're always welcome to attend that. If you do have a link for us, I'd be more than happy to disseminate that. Thank you so much. All of ours. Very good. Thank you. It's a pleasure to see you again. We have next here, Mrs. Amy Lyle. Yes, Amy.
Hello, hello, everybody. Amy Lyle, 18, North 2nd Street. And I am here as a parent and a community member. And member of PFLAG. Just to thank you all for supporting our child and all of the LGBT kids. Thank you, students in our district. It's a really scary time to be a parent. And I'm so grateful that our daughter comes to school and is safe. And I worry after graduation, she's out in the bigger world. We don't have control over that. So I appreciate you listening and providing the reassurance, but I don't think we even knew how much we needed. It means everything to us. And families know that they can count on you. And not everybody can sit and fend in every district. And that's a way scary, hard place to be as a parent. There's districts who looked out for opportunities to implement supportive policies, and you've done the opposite. And I feel so proud of Mount Horeb School District and I'm proud to be a member of this community. And I'm just, as a social worker, I'm also proud that you also reach out to immigrant families and to families with disabilities as well. Everybody's just feeling so much more vulnerable right now. And that's it.
We're kind of a package deal. You understand by me, you've done all my prides. So nationally, I live with her. They're in town, and we have a kiddo, and we are very proud to call her a liking. I would echo all the things Patty said. I would echo all the things that Amy just said. I think what I want to do, Amy's kind of a tough act of follow there, but I just want to share just tremendous gratitude for what all of you on the board have done to protect this community school system, for Dr. Soler's incredible leadership, for the senior leadership throughout the district, for principals, for the teachers, that every day just demonstrated commitment to inclusivity. And as Amy said, I mean, this is a really contentious time. And I think what I wanted to invite the board to do, because I think Amy has shared sort of our sentiment, but I wanted to invite you all to consider, you know, as we know, elections have consequences. We've learned that over the last eight years, right, at the federal level. They also have consequences at the state and at the local level. And what I invite all of you to do is to remember that in this community of nine to 10,000 people... I, age-ish? No, no. 7,000 people. That your elections reflect the values that we share in the larger community. So we can't have a room with 7,000 people in it, but I just want you to remember that in these small gatherings. By sitting on the board here, you reflect the values of our community. I'm sort of tremendous grateful.
Any other citizens comment?
Not at this time.
Number three, the school news. Who would you like to start us off?
We can start with Dr. Soler if you'd rather.
That's probably a good idea, yeah.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you again. And thank you for your continued support of our young people and the community that loves them. We have a number of really exciting things happening over the course of the next couple of weeks. To begin with, of course, our students, particularly at the high school, are in competition season. So whole ensemble, they're just fine tuning their pieces and their collections, and we're looking forward to them participating here in a couple of weeks. I want to extend a note of gratitude to all the faculty and staff, both up front and behind the scenes, who are helping support our young people, who promises to be a really exciting experience. And I continue to just be impressed with the extracurricular activities that are going on around our district right now. Our basketball team is just really doing a fantastic job. I think, oh, that's my time, I'm done. I'll stop that. That is my sign, right? But suffice to say, we have a number of competitions going on, and tonight you'll get a chance to hear from one of our co-Ex teams, Skills USA, who will be helping us to celebrate our Career Technical Education Month, which is the month of February. I won't steal their thunder. But lastly, I just want to also extend a note of invite to anyone in the community who would like to have a conversation with us around "The Anxious Generation", it's a book that's been finding its way around the community now, the course of the past six months. And on Tuesday evening, March 18th, at the public library, we're partnering with them. Just to have some conversation about what implications are there from reading this book on our practices as a school district. And ultimately then, a recommendation born of the feedback from our parents and our students and our administrators that we hope the board would consider. And lastly, board members, I wanted to let you know, thanks to the good work of people like Carly Fisher and Leah Lipska, we've been attending a number of safety review task force meetings. I think we're on to our sixth or seventh now. And coming soon, we'll have a slate of recommendations for the board in terms of prioritized needs around safety and security with our school. So, I don't know if I'm maybe missing anything that's really important in the land of the high school students or...
Well, it took my big ones.
The bubbler, members. The bubbler.
That's an important one, yeah. But I would add on, you know, sports continuing. I know a few sports just had their last home events this season in the past week. I know gymnastics, I believe, and girls' basketball. There might be others. I don't know. But that, and also I think it's important to acknowledge, you know, Black History Month's still going on. I understand that Mount Horeb doesn't have the greatest, you know, I mean, largest black community, but I think that's also important to acknowledge. Of course, so an ensemble's still going on, and, you know, extracurricular activities. So, I guess that's it. Thank you.
What members in the school news?
I would just say, I was at Rotary Breakfast this past Super Bowl Sunday, and I got to listen to some of the great students' musical talents, and there was two different groups that came through, and they were really good. And there were a lot of people listening and entertaining by themselves.
Little band. And those kids, they get it, they stay after school, sometimes even come in early to practice, and it's just really wonderful passion they have. Thanks for coming.
I would also just like to mention that it's National FFA Week, especially since we have a FFA number here. And you all know that I'm a huge proponent for Mount Horeb's Great Ag Program and FFA chapter, so I just wanted to give a shout out. And thank you to our ag educators here.
It's also School Crossing Guard Week. So, Ms. Moyer and all of our contested crossing guards, we couldn't give school more than that.
You would have thought that we could have warmer weather this week for them.
Anything else? Moving on, personnel transactions.
Of course, there is an agenda to make some transactions.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve our personnel transactions?
Motion to approve. I'll send it now.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Adam, to approve the personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Number five, our consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull out to discuss? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Joel, seconded by Carly, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Our discussion item.
Hi, I'm like, we get to get through our guests. Career and tech education month.
Yeah, we have some new slides.
Good evening, all, and thank you all for your message. This is Coach Library, and I can attest to, as people in the building, we hear you represent. We're here for you. Secondly, it is Black History Month, and a great month to recognize our students have been marginalized by multiple systems, things that those make your wrong. With that, we have Career Technical Education Months that falls suit. With that, we obviously have a very robust Career Technical Education CTE program. I joked to the doctors and some of our partners moving forward in our IV program, CTE actually stood for Career Technical Education before medical stole it, but we're bringing it back for tonight. However, every time you give me a couple of minutes, I've taken 20 extra, so I'm gonna bypass me Badger Night U tonight with statistics and some of the fun things that we do. But we have 544 individual students representing CTE within your high school community, which is an astonishing number this year. There are also what is now starting to be on our report cards and things that are being tracked through tables, things that our students are interactive in within our CTE programming through CTSO, which was earlier Career Technical Education student organizations. And the one beautiful thing about these is, as much as they are that social interaction that outside of school system, it's more work, it's more organization, it's more learning, it's more education, it's more hands-on, it's more trying than what you're gonna find in the technical club. So these are all students who want to represent, who want to push, and from the young ladies that you're gonna hear from tonight. And when we got assessed as a CZ department, and we saw, I'm like, oh, man, I hope my kid can work for one of those. I have two boys in third and fourth, and any of these women representing are gonna be great bosses for him. So, there is, I love that. My sister was the first female partner at Urban Paulson of 35 white naps. She was the first person to break through. And I think you're gonna see people here tonight that can do similar. So with no further ado, I'll let them represent. Unfortunately, and I don't know if you guys know this, but there's a sickness going around periodically in our district. And one of our representatives was unable to make it late tonight, so I will go ahead and talk about that when that comes up. But until then, I will let the young ladies introduce and talk about their programs.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, hi, I'm Laurel.
Oh, you're the assistant.
Okay. Hi, I'm Laurel Helen. I'm a senior at the high school, and I'm here to represent DECA. I currently serve as our chief executive officer. DECA is a career-oriented organization that kind of gives students the opportunity to build on their learning within the business field and apply it to real life and to build those real-world skills. And we go through a lot of competition, where students will get put in a role-play situation, and they get somewhere and have to apply their learning and work through these situations to prepare themselves for their real-life future careers. And so, outside of competition, we have opportunities for connecting with small businesses and community service and professional development. But in terms of competition, we recently had 28 members make it past the regional competition and qualify for state, which is next week at Geneva, where we will be networking and we will be trying to pass this competition level to get to the international level. And so we'll have the opportunity to connect with members from around the state that are interested in business, and it'll give people the chance to form connections that they might use well into the future if they're looking to go into the business field. So it's super exciting that we are taking so many people this year, and we thank you for your support of our organization.
Congratulations.
Unfortunately, Gabrielle, and I want to make sure I hit our current president's name right. Gabrielle Kent, who was a part of this organization at a different school, has chosen to come to Mount Horeb and be a part of some things we offer at CTE, is also our president of FCC LA, ran by Ms. Sam Schultz. It's in its first year and already has 11 participants. And when Jose speaks, which also is gonna be Laurel coming for multiple red flags. I'm sorry, that's right here, one today. Someone did go to Iowa today for a tour, was unsure if we're gonna make it back, and Laurel was gonna double dip, and she's part of multiple, thanks Laurel for that. All right, so in its first year, we already have 11 participants. It is the one part of our Family Consumer Science program offering an FCC LA program. It's only family-based child development. And we know in our community, we're looking to raise the child development in some of the things that our community's trying to engage in. And Ms. Schultz is offering that opportunity to our students to learn more about the professions and the things that go into that nature of work through the work she's doing in Family Consumer Science. We're very happy with Ms. Schultz for opening those doors to our students, and 11 students strong, just to start the first year. So, another program we started.
I'm here. So my name's Alavea Burton Blizzard. I've been involved in FFA for four years. Three years as a president, officer, the chairman, the president. Our club is, our organization is based off of students who are, they have to have an ag science class in our high school, and then they're not automatically in our club, but allowed, or I shouldn't say allowed, but welcome to join us. We have 80 members currently. And then, so we do a lot of activities outside of the high school. Community service, we do leadership workshops, and then, like, teams. So we go to CDEs, which are career development events, LDEs, which are learning development events. So our CDEs are more like livestock, floriculture, fun things that you just get to test your knowledge on. And then LDEs, our learning development events, are more so, like, I've been doing the mock interview, so stuff like real livestock skills you'll need. But just to be, like, tested on how well you can do those. And we do a lot of trips. Our main one that a lot of people participate in is gonna be our national convention. Indiana every year, that's a fun trip. It's a big convention center. And then we do, like, individual workshops within that. And then I recently just went to our Washington Leadership Conference, where it really helped me to grow my leadership skills for our organization. And we're hoping to get more kids involved in that upcoming. With COVID, it was hard, it took a downfall, but we toured Washington DC, did community service there. And then we also do a Canada fishing trip, which we have quite a few members going this year, I think about 115, which is a pretty good group. We go out and we stay on an island in tents and fish for a whole week with no cell phones, which is really cool. Pretty awesome, but yeah, it's just a really good place to grow leadership skills in.
I was not the big president in 1997.
So she's wanting to be a reference. That's what you do. Great job.
Hello, my name's Lex Jessie. I'm a senior this year. I have been this president this year and last year. It's our second year as a host of Chapter at Mount Horeb. I also was the student who brought this idea to Mr. Lazar, and luckily, he agreed to jump on board with my crazy idea. Also, we do a lot of learning about healthcare and all the variety of careers. So, one way that we do that is we try and dedicate one meeting a month to bringing someone in to hear about what they do on a daily basis, their education that they got to getting to where they are today, and then advice that they have for our students now, and two actions that they can take to kind of get more experience while they're in high school. And also, we recently did competing at the regional levels. That's very exciting for our students to get to pick the event that they wanted to study and kind of learn more that way. And we are looking forward to trying some new events with the spring that we have left, including a bio-technology lab we are hoping to find with these students. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kathy Straka. I'm a senior this year and a president of Skills USA. I have been a member for two years now, just in the final round of last year. And I feel like this is such, like, a diverse group of kids, and it's just, like, amazing. There are kids that are going into mechanics or things like that, and there are people that will be aerospace engineers and help work for NASA and put cars on Mars. So it's just crazy, the people you meet and the growth that you work. Because this club connects educational learning to the classroom, to the industry. It, like, so pretty much like where I'm doing. I learned in the classroom, I took Williams class and general class on, like, programming, not like programming, like, building shapes online, pretty much. So pretty much, I took that and I put that into a competition level, which I did a month ago, and I was able to go to White Water and compete against many other students. It's my first, but yeah. And what I did was I was able to make a part that would be used in the industry, which if I could do something there, I want to be an industrial engineer, which I feel like just, like, be so eye-opening, and it helps students decide if they want to deal with their future before they leave college, which I feel like is very important. And our next competition will be regionals at UW Stout, it's a two-day event, so it will say overnight, UW Stout, each weekend. And I'm very excited for everything that will come. Thank you.
Boy, do we have a great group of students before us, don't we?
Yeah.
Would you avail yourself of questions at this point?
Yes, of course.
Can this be opened up to adults that way? But congratulations to all of you. Like, I expect to see some, one of you, I'm Shark King, probably.
I'll ask, what do you, how do you feel about these clubs? Jose had five members a year ago. There's been a persisting growth of Skills USA. What Ms. Allen and Caitlin are doing at FFA, we don't know that's a wrong one. So, as these things, and DECA is up to multiple advisors and 100-plus students, how do you feel about what you do and your involvement in our community? DECA?
I think that one of our really great programs is we give our students the opportunity to connect with the small business in Mount Horeb and create, like, an executable marketing plan for them, which, and you can kind of choose the direction of this. There are many different lanes that you can go through with this partnership, and I think it gives our students a really great opportunity, not only to build their professional connections and professional skills and real-life execution, but also to support the community and find ways to bring their services out to the real world while still being a student. And I think that that is a really useful aspect that we can provide to their education.
Laurel can then see anything.
She's had the entire faculty and staff in the palm of her hands at the beginning of this school year. Can we birdwalk for a second? How are things going with the focus on energy and the leadership you're showing there, the conservation?
Yeah, it's going well. We are hoping to do, like, a community trivia event at BRICS in April. You should all come. And we're really just looking for ways to connect with the younger students in the district right now, to educate on energy conservation. And we are looking at a few grants to apply to and see if we can build our base funds for sustainable industry in the district. But we've got a lot going on right now. It's really exciting. We're thinking about partnering next year with another organization in the school, the Ecology Club, to make just a general green team to tackle more sustainability initiatives all around. So, interesting developments. More to come.
I love it. I love it. I think I can speak for the entire board when I say this, is that, you know, you all demonstrate tremendous leadership, and I love hearing about your trip to Washington DC. And it was in full display here tonight, your great grace and poise. Speaking in front of a room full of people can be pretty daunting, but you all did it with great class, so thank you. And I have such great hope for the future. When I think about leaders like you and the things that we're gonna be able to accomplish, to know that you guys are the next generation carrying us through, just, I'm just so proud of you all. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. And to all of our teachers who are sponsors, we know that that's an extensive amount of time that you're putting into this. Weekends and I heard you say overnight in Stout and all, away from families. It's not lost on us that we truly appreciate their outstanding leadership, Mr. Smith, you being one of them. Thank you.
Yeah, and as a last point, just to make sure they're on the same page. This is a grind season for them. There's a lot going on, so they get to glow now, right? If they're gonna know what to do next, I would just like to let them know that our time is all set and they can go on to their studies and extracurriculars and get what they gotta do in their free time. Thank you for joining us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Lex, you had a good trip to Iowa, didn't you?
Alrighty, the Mini and Village League Member Reports. Charlie, you wanna start with Catherine?
Yes, so maybe the legislative engagement. We met on the 27th of January. And really, it was our first meeting from this session. We just spent the time kind of getting our feet under us, getting some updates. We talked a little bit about, we just had the Greater Dang County Consortium meeting. We talked a little bit about that. And updated the time of the current status of the State Review Task Force. We briefly discussed whether we wanted to take a position on the ATBU ordinance and decided that wasn't really in our scope. We had an update from Aubrey on staff recognition efforts. She gave us a preview of the Love Night survey results, which was pretty awesome. We had a 25% participation rate in that survey, so great, great to hear. And we're 90% of the respondents said that they felt that they left high school prepared for their next year. Awesome work there. Aubrey mentioned that she's doing, starting a comprehensive review and overhaul of our public website. To just clean out outdated content and reorganize some things. And then we just talked a little more about a legislative update. So some things to note, I'm trying not to repeat things that we probably already talked about. But the governor will release his budget address tomorrow. And once he does that, then the legislature is off and running with it. So our upcoming opportunities to advocate in person on the day at the Capitol on the 12th, which some of us are signed up for. There'll be opportunities to testify in front of joint finance once those hearing dates are announced in April. And then a couple of other legislative things to keep an eye out. The state Supreme Court is still ruling on whether the governor's line item vetoed that created the 400 years of revenue increases holds. What Wasby was saying is that if that holds, it's probably gonna change the tenor of what the legislature is willing to do funding-wise this year. Otherwise, let's see. A lot of bills coming out of the legislature. We'll talk more about them in our next meeting, which is a week from today.
Thank you, Charlie, any questions for Brad? Adam, Education Committee?
Yeah, I was not at this meeting, so thank you, Sarah Straka, for summarizing some of our highlights that we went through. We had an alternative learning pathways discussion to the support grant. Pathways teacher Vicki Norton gave an overview of our alternative learning programming, talking about our current offerings. Shareboard had two other pathways, which are reduced credit and competency-based for students to graduate with a diploma. These are very selective, the two pathways can only be used by a few students for each school year. Three policies were reviewed. We're gonna bring those to the board during March, all involving religious ceremonies, observances, and our policies just needed to be reviewed. Several fronts there, so you can find those in Board Notes. The AI Task Force met in January for the second time and built three subcommittees. One is safety, privacy, and equity. Two is staff development in terms of efficiencies and workflow, and also classroom integration of AI. And number three was academic integrity and student skill development. And speaking of our grading for learning, we've got a, planning is underway for Community Information Night. That is Wednesday, April 16th at 6:30 PM. We've had another, this is the second one? This is the second one? It's the last one as well. Learnings from this year will be shared with families and next steps will be provided after that point. So that'd be a great chance to weigh in for everybody who's very interested in that subject.
Questions for Adam? Thank you. Sarah, did the community call or should we do that? So the village met on February 5th. They had a couple of guests. The Dane County Executive Melissa Nagard came and spoke about her first nine days in office. There was an individual who spoke about financing for street improvements. And then also, there was a conversation about affordable housing, defining affordable housing, how they can build that in, and what zoning work needs to be done. I bring that up only because housing will possibly be a problem for us. Lola and Shivam were both there. And I know that they asked you all about the phone policy, which was interesting. I don't know if you have any other updates to share?
No, honestly, not anything seriously pertaining to the school or anything education-based. I mean, they asked us about the phone policy and we essentially just summarized what it has generally been in the past year and before that.
Sarah, the district's early literacy remediation plan.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. I've been keeping the Education Committee apprised of Act 20 since its succession in 2023. And we parts, all the new parts, whether it's looking at curriculum, looking at assessments, looking at training for staff, all those pieces. The newest piece is the district early literacy remediation plan. Every school district has to create and post this on their website sometime throughout this year. So we've been working on ours and we're at the point of sharing it publicly with the board. It is also posted on our website. There's no need necessarily for board approval, but more for notification that you guys know where we're at. It is a living document, so as we need to tweak or make changes, as we learn things throughout the year, we may be adding, modifying, revising this document. But this is pretty close to perfect for now, which is good. You can see in the table of contents where we offer information about the assessments, the screeners that we have three times a year. Then after screeners, if students score in the 24th percentile or over, they can provide diagnostics to really try and pinpoint what specific area they may need more support in for intervention. Then the interventions are listed. We have a couple attached documents to this. And then it talks through the personal reading plan and what that looks like and our family notification procedures. At the end, then the last page, we have, at page 18, we have our checklist as well. Where you can see each one, what we're working on. And we'll make sure to include, I think there are a few more things to tweak there. We haven't got, we're really here yet. But again, this is close perfect for now, and this is the beginning. So again, it's just more information, a form of FYI for you all to know where we are in this. And we do have it publicly posted on our website, so families want to know what our plan is. There we go. School districts take different approaches to this. When we first started this journey, I talked to our team. We could be super broad in our plan, and some school districts are very, have very broad, I'd say more generic plans. And some can get really, really detailed. We're sort of in the middle to more detailed as we go. But we feel like while we're doing it, we might as well document it. And as we have new employees in the school district, families move in, they can see exactly what happens and why and all those things. So if you guys have any questions?
How's it going for staff doing all the interventions that you've got to keep back so far? The additional?
Yeah, yeah. We're fortunate to have some procedures in place prior to this. So having tier two interventions, two, three intervention. We've always had with our math, sorry, our reading interventionists. There's very tight timelines from this first statute. So after all students are screened in the fall, winter, or spring, we just have 10 days later to do all the diagnostics and create the plans and notify families. So some schools, there's some school districts where I've heard actually entered one class. Every student qualified for a plan. When we think about a school building, that's a lot of kids to do all these things. Maupara, those numbers are not that high. So it is, it's been tight. We were fortunate to purchase a product called Maxpat, which is our data analysis tool. It has been helpful for notification, but there's things we can definitely do better. We are actually up for our 10th communication with families in a couple weeks. So reviewing the progress monitoring data. So when students are, have, when students do have an intervention, their progress monitor is able to see how we're doing. So our specialists will look at that, decide if the plans need to be adjusted, and notify the place. So that's our current step we're running out. And then after spring break, we'll do our spring screener as well. So every month or two, there's something that we keep our, which is good.
I think you just answered my question, which was if the IRS definition 25th percentile was statewide for school, which like, then by definition means you're constantly in a cycle, right?
Yeah, you're constantly in a cycle. And we currently had this cycle to start with. It's just a little more, there's more communication. Having the plan is new. Having a documented official plan. We've always kept lists and looked at groups and modified groups. But now each student having their own plan is just a new piece that we have to get used to. And we're doing a better job of looking at the diagnostic data to see what the specific skill need is or to have a better connection with the intervention. So there are good things. It's always the system and logistics you have to figure out to get there.
And you've assembled an amazing team of professionals to help us develop that plan. Would you mind just sharing some of the people who you've encircled yourself with?
Sure, yeah. Throughout this year and even until last year, being with our two school sites, Concoltee and Active Company, they are reading interventionists we've been meeting with as well. So we have two in each school building, two in each level, I should say. And then getting teacher employed, I know teachers are doing the heavy lifting with offering interventions for students at the 24 to 10th percentile. Then also the weekly progress monitoring. Some teachers have, could have anywhere between three kids are progress monitoring, maybe it's up to eight or nine. So the teachers have had that heavy lift, not only actually in training with letters to implementing a new curriculum, to having Act 20, to progress monitoring. So it's our staff that's really on the front lines doing that heavy lifting. I just get the honor of working with them and trying to think of the systems that could help, but they're really doing the work.
But without Sarah Straka's light work ahead, sorry, I know I'm not allowed to do this, but I mean, without her leadership and what she did, we would not have had this ball rolling as quickly as we have. Because I have friends who are in other districts and they were nowhere, they were not nowhere, they were not anywhere near as prepared as we were. And that's all because of you.
We just got lucky.
No, we didn't. But that letter training last year, doing that ahead of the summer before, that was huge. So thank you for your leadership there.
Life worked out for us. Thanks, Alexa.
Sarah, at the end of the day, you kind of have this mechanism in place. I'm sure it'll take a little time to, you know, iron things out a little bit. Where are you seeing the biggest opportunities for success on this? And where's still like the, you can lead the horse to water, but can you finish it? Can you push it across the finish line in terms of student improvement with this system?
Yeah. The universal core piece, we have a resource at UCLA, and it's that we're in our first year implementation. So seeing the benefit of that, it may take a little time. The staff is learning that on top of, they also learned a new assessment this year, which is AIMS Web. So getting familiar with those pieces is important. I think we do have, in this case, the implementation constant or not, it hasn't really been a dip, it's just a constant we haven't seen up to yet, like we saw with bridges. So that's a piece that we're trying to figure out. Meeting often has been helping to talk through these pieces. And we've actually been doing some trainings through CISA 6. That's not our CISA, we're in CISA 2, as you guys know. But CISA 6 up in Fox Valley area has really been leading the charge on early literacy. So we've been fortunate to go through those trainings to get little tidbits of like, oh, we should be trying this or we should be doing this. So that's been helping as well. But we are like building the shift and steering it and supporting passengers all at the same time. And the area of like us to grow better is actually personalizing the plans even more and getting teachers comfortable with that as well. Because we have a new curriculum, because we have a new diagnostic, and we're rarely doing, because of all these things. As our interventionists myself, we've been not really protecting, but we've been protecting the staff a bit about creating the plans and going through that. So I think that's the next third piece for our staff, is getting more familiar with the plans and being comfortable to speak to and analyze more on it. And then looking at our interventions and just trying to sharpen those as well. I'll take this year into summer to feel better with that.
Okay, yeah, a lot of moving pieces.
Yeah.
Do you expect some stability in the system in terms of the ask on users?
Well.
It's always just kind of a moving landscape.
Yeah, yeah, it's moving. AIMS Web, I believe the state has a two-year contract. So we'll see when that contract is up, if they select AIMS Web again. Because the measure changes, a little bit, things change, so it's just an honorary curve. They all test the same things, it's just who is the lowest price for the state.
Go ahead.
That's a very cute question.
I'm very naive.
Yeah, so, actually.
Totally, totally.
So, okay. What does the feedback loop to our legislature look like on this, right? They published this law, they withhold the funding. You roll up your sleeves, all of you, and get in there and just get it done. But there's a breaking point here, right? I mean, I'm looking at all the things that we've done as a district over the last little while that just add and add and add. At some point, we can't ask for anymore. So what is that feedback? First of all, I guess the question I would have is, in the legislation, which I haven't had a chance, maybe you've looked at it, but do they publish cost estimates by district? And then do they gather feedback on that? I think we need to look at that. And I think that's something that we need to take back to our legislators because the amount of time you guys are spending on this one thing, and then you have everybody else to educate too, by the way.
Correct, yeah. There's always an ebb and flow with new things, right? And to take your direction this way for a little bit, you always still maintain these other things. No, I mean, there is no cost estimates. There's nothing out there. If, there's been rumor, right? If money's not spent, we go back to wherever, ether of this extra money, right?
That's true. I mean, if it's not resolved by June 30th, it goes back to surplus.
Hopefully, there's, I mean, there's. They could.
This guy's got to tell every time he's too bad.
They could decide a new budget cycle, right? And then back in, right? There's safety measures that could occur. So we purchased a new resource, yes. We purchased training for letters, yes. AIMS Web, yes, that's nice of that.
Yeah, but Sarah, it's not even that. I mean, those are, those are small costs compared to the time.
Time.
And all of that stuff. If we actually break down the time in terms of dollars and cents and then go ahead and look at our healthcare costs on top of it, because eventually we get emotionally full as we look at this stuff. I mean, I think, there's lots of fantastic ideas that come out of think tanks all over the place, but I'm concerned there's no feedback loop. There's no chance for them to really look at, what's the cost of this? Not, and what's it costing our students ultimately too? If we're stealing excellent teachers' time away from the broader group, that's a problem in itself. I don't know if there's something that we could look at doing as a district on something like that.
I mean, I think that like, we, so I was just emailing with Jackson Smith and I were today about our next community legislative agenda. And one of the items on there is like, And one of the items on there is like, here's, here's a list of like all these things, all these things that we have the opportunity to prioritize in terms of advocacy, whether it's to the state legislature, whether it is engaging the village, you know, whatever it is and what are the things on it that we want to prioritize. So we'll have some of that discussion in the week from now, but I, we'll write your, leave it down.
Prioritize is great, but I'd like to see that feedback loop. So I don't know how we do that.
Yeah, my initial gut is like we build better relationships other than just going to the data capital every other year, right? That's, we have new legislators. We have, I mean, I think both of them are, say that both of them are interested in conservative education and we continue to invite them here, have them see things that, have them hear from our staff.
I'm just thinking even of creating a set of talking points that anytime anybody in the district has an opportunity in front of somebody, you say, you say these three things. And I don't pick whatever they are and that's going to change. But I, we've got to find some way. Because again, forcing this, all this top-down approach and then no feedback. And I get it, that's been built intentionally, but.
Yeah, Act 20 is just my example.
Exactly, that is one small thing. But I've been on the board number two years and I'm watching all the things come through. And I appreciate all of your roll up your sleeves and get it done.
Time for feedback.
Well, that's exactly it. There's something new to worry about. I can't give you any information. No, I, I don't know. I just can't imagine operating my business that way. And again, that's nothing against any of you guys. You guys are doing a great job. It's just, we've got to find some way to get that. So yeah, maybe it is through the, Kale, Callie, one of you guys referring to yourself today? Kale? It's a healthy.
Oh, I mean, it's.
Yes, okay, all right, God. Okay, I was just, I was just curious if we ever really do, and it doesn't sound like we do at this point, but that might be something that we talk about is, do we, do we start to look at that for some people?
Yeah, I think we, I don't know if we ever really ask for feedback in the state statute. Besides the whole, right? People are, but once it's a statute, you just do.
Well, of course.
All these pieces are versus like somebody coming from DPA on their own free will. Remind me if you got group there, but this, there's not yet.
But it's the statute in terms like the Titanic. And so let's melt the iceberg before we hit a top of, so.
Yeah, we'll take that.
Exactly.
That's reasonable. Any other questions, good questions?
Tip of the hat to you and the team. Thank you so much and to our staff, please extend our deep gratitude for their good work.
For their work. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Jamie.
Excellent.
Erin, employee retention. So I have some information for you all on our employee retention report. Lots of different information here, so I'm just going to kind of hit each section a little bit. Of course, always open for questions. Just to kind of set the stage of employment trends and workforce stability. Unemployment is low, especially in our local region of Dane County of 2.1%. Though I would say in general, the education trends of turnover and such are quite different. And that's not just local, that is state and national trends. The teacher turnover rate, educator turnover rate is on a steady increase. You can see some of the graphs in here, both nationally and statewide, you'll see that trend. Though locally, we are doing pretty good and I'll show some information on that as we go down. The employment retention rate here locally in Mount Hore, you'll see a number of retirements, a number of resignations, or a five-year trend. Overall, resignations and retirements are slightly down, but really pretty much in line in the last few years. It's also broke down in between by different employee classifications. And you can kind of see where some high notes and low notes might be in that area.
Erin, what was the time period on that figure three? I was trying to do the math on the 76 number. The figure three? It's like 76, I saw a total and I didn't, the numbers didn't square up, you know. And I know voluntary is a different part of that, but I just didn't know the time period that that 76 reflected.
It's 38.
38 total and then some broken.
Got it, thank you.
30, sorry.
Yep, no, that's good to know. And this is out of 388 employees, got it?
Yes, yeah, this is this year, just looking at the resignations broken down in classifications. Where at the top, the top section is the trend over time, how many resignations per year.
I see it. I see it, I was just adding all those numbers together and getting confused. So thank you.
Yes, no problem. The Wisconsin teacher retention report, educator preparation program report comes out. We had one come out from the state in 2024. This is, the nice information to see trends over time. The one thing that report doesn't necessarily allow us to be proactive because it's, you know, a year and a half or two years behind, but it's, it's good information to see. From 2022 to 2023, 84% of teachers remain within a district. So you can see that our retention is still below that, or I should say our retention is above the state average. Our retention rate is about 89.7%. When you break down some information in that educator preparation program report, there's some very interesting trends. You can see here to some of the state, same state, same district, same school, across the state of where teachers are leaving local districts or possibly the states. And then it was, I thought it was interesting just looking at differences between city, rural, suburban, and town. You can see city schools have the highest percentage of turnover. So just some information to kind of set the stage of what educators, educator turnover looks like. Another important piece that came from that same report was license with stipulations. Again, this shows the high need for teachers. This is steadily increasing with one-year teacher license with stipulations. You might hear emergency licensure, same thing. What that means is teachers who are getting licensed early and continuing their education and programming to get that fully licensed pathway. You will also see it broke down in categories below. Cross-categorical special education is the highest need, though it's gone down, so that's great. You also see regular education, license with stipulation coming to rise. Locally, we've definitely felt the cross-categorical special education. We've definitely supported some teachers getting their license with stipulations and supporting them through that full licensure process. We have not felt the regular education, emergency licensure locally. But that's an interesting trend to be aware of, I think. Also, I think we definitely, if you go down to figures six, language assessment, so folks that are getting their licensure in other languages, we've definitely felt this locally. But as you can see, the trend for people entering this program is very, very low. This is just one example of some of the areas in which teachers are high need of teachers. So this is just something for us to be aware of. We have been very lucky in Mount Hore. We have been able to fill our teacher vacancies pretty easily and pretty quickly. But it's important for us to know these trends. When we look at things more locally, we have some information that I wanted to share with you in regard to internal surveys that we give to new employees and employees exiting our organization. This recruitment resource, this is just important to know, where are people seeing our opportunities to work here? WECAN, which is a portal for educators widely used across the state, supported by the state, definitely where people see our job postings as well as the data. Word of mouth is still pretty high. So that's important information for us, as well as the candidate experience rating. That has been high and kind of a very small dip, but it's continued to rise as well. This just helps us understand, making sure that people are feeling welcomed and a part of a Mount Hore community quickly. And the one thing that we really love about these candidate experience ratings are something that really can be captured in a, with data in a picture form. But rather, for example, we had some folks talk about learning more about co-curricular, the free passes. Like that is just something that somebody was able to put in that survey that we're able to hear and see what's really important to folks coming into our organizations. As well as folks leaving the organization. If people do decide to leave, we'd like to know why. So we do have an anonymous survey that folks can fill out. And this is just a trend over time on areas in which people cite as their primary reason for leaving the district. I would say in general, people have good thoughts about the district, personal reasons, relocating. So coupled with this, along with some of the information that you saw in our district wellness survey, I work with people who treat me with respect is very high. 97% most recently, but always up in the mid 90s to high 90s. Folks enjoy being a part of our organization. Are safe for a long time and the connections that they make are important to our students and our larger community. I think one thing that we hope to do and the state is looking at is to make sure that we can find some teacher incentive, incentive programs. Our locally, local states next to us, our neighboring states have some great incentives for teacher education. Wisconsin is not quite there yet, so hopefully we can work with our state. As well as, you might think that working with other HR directors regionally. Of course, we're competing against each other, but we're also in it for kids. So if we can share great strategies for recruitment and retention, we always do. So those partnerships are really important as well. We try to help each other out when we know of great people that we maybe didn't hire that are out there to get them in school. So those partnerships are very valuable as well.
Erin, how, do you know, I mean, unless it's more looking at us compared to the state one, do you know how our retention rate is compared to like more local, like say Dane County districts?
Um, I don't have comparative numbers, but each month, yeah, I mean, each month, I mean, with Dane County HR directors, I would say very similar. I think, I think the Dane County region is pretty competitive and in general, are doing better with retention than the state average.
Dr. Sarah, can you go back up to figure nine? Erin, only like less than half of those folks are leaving responding to the survey. Based on your just knowledge of the people that are leaving, even things that might not be represented here, do you have a sense of there's anything that should be an area of concern that maybe isn't coming up here?
I don't see a specific area of concern. I think it really greatly depends on the year. Even just when you move here two years, you know, the satisfaction of pay was a large portion of 2023, not so much in 2024. Personal reasons and personal circumstances were much higher in 2023. I don't see that there's any large trends that we need to concern ourselves with. I think in general, education is a fully competitive environment now. Every school district is looking to hire. So people have an opportunity to leave. If they want to move, relocating just because it's closer for their family, those types of things where I think 10 years ago, there wasn't as many openings. So it's just, people are able to find opportunities very easily and are also recruited, you know, very much recruited by other local school districts.
I'm sorry, education, we see that quite a bit.
Yes, yes, so much so. So it's just a very competitive environment. I think that's just really important for us to be aware of.
Did any switch there? Did you move from a school year to a calendar year, Peter?
We did.
Okay.
Yes, last year we did. Yeah, so you might see a little, a couple of different places you've noticed the little difference in numbers, but overall, it's.
Well, we can have less than 10% leaving if we just quit accepting retirements.
Mrs. Schleifer's coming back.
Yeah, exactly. I love Patty's.
Seven years of rest.
No, it's earned.
Any other questions, Erin? I, the only thing I noticed, I think you even called it out in the report, is the high percent of the special education paraprofessionals. Is that, is that pretty consistent year to year? Or are we seeing a change in that trend?
I did, from last year, you know, just comparing the last year, because I did notice that as well, that was up this year, last year. Our general ed para was higher than our special ed para. And also, I would say lots of our general education ed para professionals, if someone leaves, may take one of those roles. So there's lots of internal changes sometimes. I guess that would be something that I would want to continue to monitor and see if that is steadily increasing or remains high. That was higher than previous years, yes.
Do we increase our recruiting efforts at all during times of? If I look forward six to nine months, the expectation is we should see a job market that's very much an employer market. It would be my guess. Do we monitor those trends and change how we approach that, I would assume?
I don't mean that, I'm sorry. I should have said makes a job doesn't change. Wow. Yes, and one of the things that we try to do is get ahead out of other school districts. And that's why we have our budget conversations now. So that if we have the capacity to replace positions or for an opportunity to expand, we do that. That's where we get our best talent. But you're right, when you think about long-term and what might be happening with baby boom generation preparing to retire, with the confluence of federal workers now being laid off and looking for maybe another pathway or another career, we are absolutely monitoring that right now.
Some things just, that's always a proactive approach. I don't get your job fears and then those types of things, just with their beautiful background I would be able to use last year. And just to make sure people know Mount Hore as an employer in the future, I think it's really an important piece to be proactive. And I think our staff represents us incredibly well. They, like, word of mouth was important, but I personally think that's probably higher. They might have saw the posting on WECAN, but they might have said, hey, check out WECAN. Because I hear lots of times is when I'm meeting our new employees, oh, I know so-and-so, they work in the district and so they, they have a connection or have wonderful things about Mount Hore. So that is probably our, our best recruitment.
We offer referral bonus to.
Yes, we do.
Erin, can you speak to challenges or differences maybe in recruiting CTE staff? Especially getting more into the trades areas versus kind of the standard subject matter?
Yeah, I think, I think outreach is really important. WECAN does have some nice features in there to look at folks that are just in the system and willing, you can see them in the system. And I find a lot of luck reaching out to those individuals when you're looking to fill a position. a position, rather than waiting for them to come find us. And, and just again, at any kind of recruitment fair to introduce yourself and to make sure they know that Montmoreau is out there. I think also our, our local community, not only our teachers, but our local community are great advertisers for us to know wonderful things we do and that it's a great place to work. So if maybe, you know, making connections with businesses who already have people looking to fit into.
Right. Are you feeling that the pool is decent out there yet at this point?
Um, I think, I think it's, it's very, the education pool is very, is ever-changing. Where I think sometimes you feel as though you should, you should have a large number of applicants, but maybe you don't. And it could be because there isn't a lot of change happening in that specific content area. I feel like sometimes there is local change in other communities also, that you get a better pool because there's more attention, not just for opening here, but local. So it, it's very, it's ever-changing. So you just kind of be on your toes.
Yeah. We find a lot of jobs out there.
We do.
And that's because we hire slow, we do it right. And so even though the candidate pool may not be as strong, it takes a lot to be available. And I'm okay with that. I'd rather have us put the very best in front of our young people. And I really have to give a tip of the hat to Erin because she is the leader in this effort. You can see very data-driven, creative networking with others, and always bringing next practices, not just best practices, but next practices to our district. We are very, very fortunate for your leadership, Erin. Thank you.
It's his number eight. Thank you, Erin.
I think you get to stay.
Do I have an option too?
You do. Second reading of erisions to board policy 549.1, controlled substances and alcohol testing of commercial or vehicle drivers.
This is the second reading. This policy pertains to commercial water vehicle driver, CDL drivers. This, with the, with the help of the personnel committee, lots of work went into this policy to make sure it meets the state and federal regulations, and details of the how are in the admin reg. Hopefully it's a little easier to understand and understand what those legal requirements are, so. Just a minute back for number two.
Any questions or comments?
I have a couple, for my application as much as anything. I saw the figure there about 210 liters, and I don't know how that equates to, you know, an alcohol level or whatever else that the measure, standard measure would be just in layman's terms.
For which portion of the.
Just under the.
A.
Under A, right, key definition A.
That is the legal definition of what qualifies for the breathalyzer portion of that. I just wanted the legal definition.
Sure.
I mean, like the percentage.
That's what I'm, yeah, I couldn't tell if it's like trace elements or if this is getting toward the legal limit. And it seems like it's always pretty strict, if you're right. Indeed, and in fact, we ourselves wouldn't administer that test, we would escort that individual to a workplace, organization that would do the testing for us. And they're aware of the differentiation between DOT versus other.
Right. But there is a difference between a legal limit versus.
Versus this.
What a CDL driver can have on duty.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was, it was interesting to be able to hear it all because I thought it was like a 0.0. Kind of such a.
At Google, it translates to, 210 liters of breath translates to 0.08 grams of alcohol. So it's like 0.08%.
Yes, okay. Okay. And then the other thing was, this is probably in the admin reg, how often, what's the frequency that tests are given out? And I know that they're probably randomized, but is there a minimum time that a certain person gets tested per year?
Well, in the, in the admin reg, it does detail out, there has to be a minimum random testing. It doesn't require each individual to have so many tests per year or anything like that. It is completely randomized, but you need to have a certain percentage of your staff tested. So it doesn't, it doesn't outline that per individual.
Okay.
But, so someone could randomly be selected every single time.
Right.
Or not at all. But those are outlined in the admin reg of what, how often. Also, I think in this portion, though, it does talk about the different types of why you could be tested. Of course, anybody onboarding, or if you feel like there's any kind of impairment, you always test.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions?
Would anyone like to say a motion to a group?
Motion to a group.
Hold on a second.
Motion by, currently signed by Joel to approve board policy 549.1. All is favorably said. 549.
Right.
Anyone opposed? Dr. Sauer, are you filling in for Brian on this one?
Yes, please. Board members, this is a policy that was viewed by the safety and wellness committee last month with the goal of us really trying to honor the language set forth by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Nothing structurally inherently wrong with the board's policy, but as you may recall, every three to five years, I ask WSB to review our policies, just to make certain that we're up to date and we haven't missed anything. The language you see here in is really focused on just to better clarify our process around what parents can do relative to an independent educational evaluation, if for some reason they would like to conduct that on their own, at their own expense, or perhaps maybe they're just in disagreement with the work that's been done by the district. Absolutely, we want parents to feel like they have every opportunity to explore our special supports for the young people as they see appropriate. So I'm happy to answer any questions. This is a friendly reminder, is we don't have a full board present tonight. This would automatically come back to the board, but I'm happy to see what I can do to field questions, if any, if you have to see.
How much do these cost?
Depending upon who is and they go to in the credentialing of that professional. For us to do it internally, it's just part of our normal procedure and our normal, but I've seen some depending upon the diagnoses and the, how deep the study goes into thousands of dollars.
Yes.
And sometimes it's not even covered by medical insurance.
Yeah.
So it's quite an investment, and that's why I'm grateful we have such a nice complement of professionals here, our school psychologists, who really do a super, super job.
How many times have we seen a special study stolen last five years?
I, anecdotally, I'd say not very often, but certainly we want to have a policy that does permit them to do that.
There was one question that I had, I saw the reference in there, that we don't insist on our reason for requesting IE. And I was curious, like, if we don't have one, what would the due process hearing even be based on? How might we identify the proper specialist for that, if we're not sure what the concern is?
Great question. So we don't insist upon it, just simply because it is at an expense to the families. But ultimately, it's the decision of the IEP team to determine, based upon the information they have available to themselves, both anecdotal, but also empirical evidence to support people. If it's a special needs student or emotional behavioral needs, we want to make certain, has there been contact between the community and the home with regard to the police? That's a case, that's a factor that we should, we should be considering. If we see a series of behavioral incidences at school, we want to have what's called a functional behavioral assessment completed to determine what are the things that are happening for that student before they get to acting out in a way that's concerning. We use examples of that kind of data to inform whether or not as a full committee, we would move forward with a recommendation for an individual education plan for IEP.
Okay.
Even if someone comes to us with a doctor's report and says, we believe this is enough for our child to begin receiving services, we certainly invite that medical professional in to have a conversation with an IEP team so they can make an informed decision around that. We want to do everything we can to make certain we've dotted every I and crossed our T.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Great, great questions. And so certainly, if, in advance of our next meeting, if you have others, don't forget to give me a buzz or Brian a buzz, we'd be happy to talk with you. And if it's okay with you, we can get this back next time.
Scott. Dr. Berlin.
Hi, everybody. Scott. Thank you, finance committee members, and those of you that were able to attend last Monday's committee meeting. This is the time of year, you may recall, that we dive into any revisions that we need to make, February is that time period that we do that. I won't go into the detail that we spoke about last Monday, but I will point out that again, this is the format that we use under state statute, and there's the word draft at the bottom of the tables. That's due to the fact that we haven't approved these yet, so you'll see the language at the top that says that in fact, it was approved. And again, so that you can see what it would look like when it's posted in the Montmoreau mail. So there's four categories of budget revisions. Our general fund, which is, as you know, the vast majority of our business activity is in the general fund. Very high level for our general fund. Some of the normal and customary revisions that we see this time of the year are modifications to some personnel. As you know, personnel takes up vast majority of our budget. So modifications such as benefit health insurance changes at the center of the calendar year is a real pattern for some folks. Modifications to state and federal grants. I know you've heard me say this before, but for the first half of the year, a lot of times we're still working on projected numbers for both state and federal grants. So we're now able to put some finishing touches on what some of those grant amounts will look like. Also, in the general fund, we're also making modifications to how much money is being applied toward the voucher program and then open enrollment. We now have a more solid picture than we did back in early fall about what open enrollment in, kids coming into the district and open enrollment out of kids leaving the district. Overall, the change in the, the general fund is just over a $40,000 increase for both revenues and expenditures. Please stop me if you have any questions, I'm going to dive into the next one, which is the special projects fund. You've heard an item earlier in the meeting with the Kirk donation for $100,000. And you may recall, we also received $100,000 for a new scholarship in our high school. And that happened back at the end of last calendar year. So our special projects fund, which is the second table, accounts for both of those receipts. And we don't know, as you heard earlier, exactly where that $100,000 donation will go toward, but we're earmarking it now for it to be expended this fiscal year. Keep in mind that our special projects fund does allow us to carry over money from the end of this fiscal year to the next fiscal year. So if funds aren't expended for whatever reason, there's nothing, there's no problem. We're able to just carry that forward into the next year. The big anomaly for us this year, though, is we're not heading into referendum projects every school year, right, like we are right now. And so the debt service fund accounts for the fact that the referendum back in November was approved. And you may recall, board members, you are inside filling out the past two tax levies, one without the referendum and one with an approved referendum. We have not done budget revisions since October prior to the referendum. So the debt service fund is simply just allocating the correct Fund 39 tax levy for that referendum. And then the fourth one is the capital projects fund, and quite frankly, this is the activity of the referendum itself. As you know, back in December, December 19th to be exact, we closed on our first phase of borrowing for the referendum, and that was $10 million. So we're accounting for that now in our capital projects fund and revenue. Simultaneously, we just had a, our first official kickoff meeting with Bray Architects about a week and a half ago, and they were kind enough to share a drawdown schedule for us to let us know, hey, here's what we think you're going to be drawing down on your referendum funds each and every month. So for this fiscal year between now and June 30th, they're projecting about $600,000 of expenditures. And so I thought, okay, as a placeholder for now, let's get $600,000 allocated for expenditures to account for that, and that will modify if we need to as the spread goes on. Thank you again, finance members, because we actually really had a good conversation and facting in some of this stuff. But certainly be happy to answer any questions, if any might happen.
Can you, Scott, excuse me, sorry, can you remind me the, the expenditure increase in the general fund, so $200,000, how much of that was, that was vouchers for some?
Yeah.
Some of that or all of that?
Yeah. Yeah, almost $100,000 of that, actually just over $100,000 of that was for the voucher program. Now, the voucher program on revenue limits, I could kind of take a big left turn here, but in revenue limits, the voucher program provides more revenue through taxes for a school district, but then on the same token, on the expenditure side, we also have to account for that same amount of money for the voucher program. So we collect it through our revenue limit, through taxes, and then it's expended out. So I'd never heard it described this way, but it kind of feels like an in and out, comes in one way and then it goes out the other way. And thank you.
And Scott, I think that you mentioned that that number was what, the 600?
Just over $600,000. Yeah. Thank you, Chris. So we usually make budget revisions about three times a year, one in October when we establish the tax levy, one in February, and then one when we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. I did mention at the finance committee, either in March or April, I may be coming back to account for our phase two borrowing for the referendum. There's no sense of urgency and having to do it in March or April. We could wait till our May or June timeframe. It's just I do a regular reporting, automated reporting through our financial software with the state through DPI. And if I'm able to get that data updated quicker, as I do our regular reporting with DPI, it'll just be, you know, more reflective of what's really happening. So I'll keep a touch on what that looks like over the next couple months.
Board members, we ask for your consideration of approval of this.
Motion to approve budget revisions, as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joel, seconded by Adam, to approve the presented budget revisions. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Scott?
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Scott. And by the way, Scott and Erin are modeling the new senior leadership team.
Uniforms.
Sarah. Do we have any more citizens' comments?
I didn't see anybody else.
Number nine, future agenda items, if there's anything you'd like to discuss, please let Dr. Sauer know. Number 10, schedule of our next meetings.
Board members, I just invite you, if you don't mind, to, if we haven't already done so, either look at the pictures that we provided to you for our show, and/or go over to the dripless historian. We're looking forward to hosting students one month from tonight, and I'll bring them in a selection so that we can invite that student and celebrate and give them a little love back. and give them a little about that.
Number 11, executive session. Counted a closed session per section of 19.851F, considering financial, medical, social, or personnel histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems for the investigation or charges against specific persons. Except where, parentheses, B, applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit employees on social media posts. Roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Motion first, please. I would make a motion to go to executive session.
Second.
Motion by Karly, seconded and pound to go into executive. I will move.
Yes.
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 And also yes, 8 o'clock, 5:00.